Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. This is a zoning board of appeals meeting for Monday, April 22. This meeting is being recorded both by our secretary so she can make minutes in the meeting, but also in response to the town meeting vote to have all board meetings recorded and put on the community cable access, community access website. So it will be posted there. So our first hearing is for 545 Franklin Street, type of district, single residential A2 and limited industrial, type of structure and existing duplex to remain in a proposed single-family dwelling. Owner's name Jeffrey Bailey. Owner's address 545 Franklin Street. When did you acquire this property? June 16, 2017. His application been filed with town clerk, yes. Has any previous appeal been made? No. Section of bylaw which relief is requested? Article 6, section 240-6.5, reduction of contiguous minimum lot frontage and section 240, 5.4, construction of a detached dwelling. This case was advertised in the Whitman-Hanson Express on April 4th and April 11th. Sitting on the case will be Mr. Curran, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Kimball, Mr. Blaz, and myself, John Goldrosen. This time we'll have the reading of the list of abutters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The following is in a butters list using the requirements of the State Zoning Act, parties in interest for the property located at 545 Franklin Street, Whitman, Mass., Bear Meadow, Town of Whitman, Bear Meadow Parcel 44, Janelle, Westundy, Trustee, Central Street, Eastbridge Water Trust, Franklin Street, Parcel 30B722, Commonwealth Massachusetts, Franklin Street, Parcel 31C75-46, Ritter Farm, 457 Franklin Street, Robert Cabral, 483 Franklin Street, Donna Ryan, 493 Franklin, Richard McKean, 521 Franklin, Melvin Harris and Wanda Harris, 524 Franklin, Margaret A. Joseph Sernano III, 534 Franklin, Gerald and Cheryl Hurley, 550 Franklin, Linda Sterns, 568 Franklin, Joyce Haskins, 569 Franklin, Patricia A. Baradas Living Trust, 571 Franklin, Warren and Teresa Hoppe, 573 Franklin, McShimmy Realty Trust.
Okay, so anybody who's here to participate in this case, we ask that you raise your right hand and take an oath and should be presenting evidence in the case. Are you all here for this case? Oh, you're not? Okay. Do you solemnly swear that the evidence you should give in this matter should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay. Who is presenting for the applicant? Would you introduce yourself and make your presentation?
I'm Scott Fedor with Great Consulting, representing the applicants who are here with us tonight. Looks like you all have a couple of excellent pieces for the audience if they're interested. So thank you for that introduction. As you said, we are seeking a couple of variances here. The property, it's a fairly large property. It's 3.7 acres in size. What's existing on the site is this duplex toward the front of Franklin Street. The proposal is to divide the lot into two lots with the front remaining as duplex and then the rear to be proposed as a single-family. It's a pretty interesting piece of land just where the zoning line division is. This ladder here is the zoning line, so in the front it's the single residence A2 zone and then the back is the limited industrial LI. So one of the variances that we're requesting is essentially to construct a single-family dwelling inside the LI limited industrial zone. And the other variance that we're seeking is a reduction in continuous minimum lot frontage of 120 feet. The lot, although it is fairly large, it's restricted by the frontage that it has on Franklin Street. We believe that this variance or these variances can be granted without detriment to the public good. Have any questions?
So what would the lot frontage of the new lot two be? Is it 40 feet?
Lot two, that's correct. 40.41 is its own apartment.
Okay. And the building envelope you've drawn for the proposed dwelling, it'd be at least 50 feet from all property boundaries, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All right. Okay. Let me read into record letters from town boards and then we'll have questions from members of the board and any comments from the public. I guess there may not be any. From the Board of Health, the Whitman Board of Health is willing to grant conditional approval to the petition of Jeffrey Bailey for a variance from section 240-6.5 and 240-5.4 to subdivide the property into two lots and retain the existing duplex on lot one and build a new single-family dwelling on lot two for the property located at 545 Franklin Street. The Town of Whitman's water sewer master file indicates this property is connected to municipal water and sewer. For final approval, this proposed new building, if used for occupancy, must be connected to municipal sewer and water as well. Sincerely, Daniel Kelly, health agent. Might as well ask a question now. What's, is there any issue with connecting it to water and sewer? I mean, there isn't any existing stub there, right? So you'll need to...
Correct, yeah. They won't need to tie it to both public water and sewer. The property drops off quite a bit toward the back, so up in the street we're looking around elevation 110 and down where the house is proposed, the slab's at 90. So what we typically do in these situations, we usually put like a grinder pump, a E1 pump inside the building and that'll pump it all the way up the driveway. Then we'll put a manhole at the end of the property, that'll be gradually fed into the sewer system. Then the water line would run parallel, basically underneath the driveway.
Okay. All right. And from Whitman Fire Rescue and Emergency Services, dear members of the zoning board of appeals, at this time Whitman Fire Rescue and Emergency Services had no objection to this proposal, provided all applicable fire and building codes are met. Sincerely, Timothy Clancy, fire chief. Rob, is the building inspected? Do you have any comments or concern?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any comments at this point in time.
Yeah. The one question I'll ask, although the fire chiefs did not mention this, is how wide do you plan to have the driveway within the, going back to the...
Driveway, I believe, is 12 feet wide.
Okay. That might be, we might want a condition to consult with the fire chief on that because it's, just because it's so far back, the fire chief might want the driveway to be wider.
Sure.
Not 20 feet, but he might need...
Typically, they want...
15, 16?
16 feet.
Yeah, 16 feet.
If you pave it, you can pave 12 or whatever you want.
Yeah, right.
Just make sure no trees are growing in there and you have something suitable for the ladder car base of around them?
Sure.
All the way up?
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. Then let me turn it over to members of the board for the questions. Mr. Curran?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What is the size of the lots? I don't see it on the plan.
So the proposed lots are this before here, so 27,000 square feet, so it's 22.
And there's no weapons back there?
There are weapons back there, so this is really more of a conceptual design here. On Mass GIS, there're maps, I think, 600 feet further back than what were the proposed dwelling.
Yeah, I looked at the GIS map online and I was kind of surprised that the weapons are way at the rear of the lot. I thought there would be more weapons than it is.
I had, yes.
And you don't think there's any weapons right where that foundation is?
I don't believe so, so the next step, once we go into detailed design, we will have a weapon scientist come up and delineate it.
So you do have to go conservation? Do you know if you have to?
We don't believe, based on where the weapons are mapped on Mass GIS.
So you think they're further?
We believe that they're much further back than where the house is proposed. But again, once we go into detailed design, we will have the property delineated and located.
And so nothing's gonna happen to the existing dwelling, that's just the way it is?
Correct.
I have another question.
Okay. Mr. Andrews?
Yeah. You have the existing foundation, but you're gonna use that same foundation. This house is there, stay in there. Well, I looked at the long property. Yeah, there is another one up there that's got a foundation, yeah. One thing I did notice is you've got 40 feet height, the one and 35 for the other.
Yeah, so the single residence A2, the max building height is 35 feet. The limited industrial, it allows for a larger height of 45 feet.
This is just what's required of limited industrial, that's the max building height. He's not gonna go that high. So he'll probably follow this.
Right.
I have no other questions.
Mr. Kimball?
Mr. Chairman, no questions.
Mr. Blaz?
The property, I guess that would be the Baradas. They're not here tonight, correct?
Correct.
Have you spoken to them?
Mm-hmm.
They'll be the most impacted by this. How far from the property line is their house? The site plan should have the homes of the adjacent properties on here, the driveways in the home, so we can see how this would affect neighboring properties.
Yeah, that's correct. We're not showing that on this plan here. When we go to do the full detailed design, we'll locate that house and make sure that it's designed correctly.
Is their driveway, because again, I think I looked at it in the aerial, it looked like their driveway is close to what will be the access to lot two and their, so their house is sort of farther to the left.
That's right.
And their driveway is to the right.
That's right.
Closest to the 40-foot.
Yeah, they have like a little bit of a, yeah, it's fairly close to our line, so like I think they're, it was a little bit of a, can you kind of point out a little bit?
Sure, yes.
So I think if this is where the driveway is, they probably have that little driveway that you saw here and then their house is like one here. I don't know how to measure the feet, but their house is here and then they have the little driveway that comes out to here stops.
Well, it's not right until I know they have yard.
Yeah, well, they have full side yard too, yeah.
Yeah, it's like there's some woods in between our properties.
Yeah, there is.
Between the two properties.
Yes, there's woods.
Between the two properties, there's one of those really old rock balls that goes down and there's trees to either side of it.
Okay, so there's some...
And then they have some yard and then their driveway's from there.
Okay. So do you live in lot one?
Yes.
Okay, so you bought that in 2017?
Yes.
Any idea when that house was built?
Yes, it was built, the original structure was built in the 50s and then there was an addition, the second unit was added on in 2007.
2007.
Yeah.
Do you know if, what I, were, in 2007, were there any variances granted in 2007 when that, when that would have been this board that would have allowed a two-family to get built? So were there any decisions?
I didn't...
I mean, it could be that we, that the board made a decision to allow a second unit that does not be...
Fortunately, Rob has it.
Oh.
There was a special permit, I think, to allow it to be a two-family, to convert the single-family into a two-family. Added three bedrooms and a garage under the house. The conditions were three, to grant the special permit, all in favor. You were not sitting on the case, Mr. Blaz, so excuse me.
What I remember.
Three permanent markers to be established on the northern boundary of the property at the street, 100-foot mark from the street and 200-foot mark from the street. Why, I don't know. And then granting a special permit and subjecting approval needed from the Board of Health or DHW due to the, there was a sewer moratorium in effect at the time, and I guess they had to wait to, to go on that like a year later or something. But that seemed to be the...
So no conditions further restricting?
No, nothing saying you can't do anything more with the rest of the property. It was just to, they kept the Curran Ridge line, the house.
Is that a sad statement?
Looked like someone and his sister had inherited the house after the death of the parents and this was to allow two-family, but they actually were related.
They were.
Yeah, they were related. It's almost like an in-law.
So are you gonna move out back?
Yes.
You're gonna move out back and then you're gonna rent the two...
That's right.
Okay. Thanks, thanks, Rob.
I don't have no further questions.
Yeah.
But, you know, I'm sorry, just make, make a note for the record that both the Baradases and the Harrises were on the list of abutters and they're not present for the hearing.
Okay. Yeah, my only comment, I think I would want a condition just to consult with the fire department as to inappropriate width for the driveway, but clearly with 40 feet, you've got plenty of room. That would have been my only concern. We have approved similar pork chop lots in the past as long as the proposed structure was 50 feet from all boundaries, so I would also want that to be a condition which you've allowed for here. And we generally wanted that frontage for the back lot to be 40 feet wide. Sometimes bent a little bit on that, but, so I'm glad that you set 40 feet for that. And I, yeah, I always got a comment when I went by there, I was surprised, the house doesn't have, the existing house doesn't look like a duplex.
Yeah.
Where is the entrance to the second unit?
Great question.
Yes, we live in the side that doesn't have a front door, so yes, if you go down the driveway, we, there's the garage on your left and then there's another door up on the deck, there's a deck in the back here.
So it's like the back, the back door is our front door.
So the front door is to one unit and then we don't have a front door for our current unit?
Okay. But, you know, it's worth, I think, observing that, you know, in terms of, any concern about kind of overcrowding a lot or whatever, that the existing house has the appearance of a single-family house, so it isn't like we're plopping another house behind something that looks like a two-family house. It doesn't, so...
Would you be receptive if we made a condition that the lot, the, no further divided? So could we not put another house out back?
Oh, of course, yes.
Okay, so, yeah, no, and that the, the house to be built on lot two will indeed be a single-family house.
Yes.
Limited to being a single-family house.
Sorry, just to clarify, so no, no further division with access from Franklin Street or no further division in general?
I don't know where else you'd get...
It's just a little, it's just a little bit, that's the only reason I'm asking.
Well, anything else you do, you need a variance anyway, so if you were to add another house back here?
Yeah.
Are you gonna need to clear all the trees between you and the neighbor on the left?
I don't think so because those trees, I believe the trees are on their property.
But as far as, as far as the existing trees between the proposed driveway and the lot line, most of those will likely need to be removed just for the grading purposes.
Are you proposing any fencing, something between the old house and, you know, to delineate its lot lines?
We have a fence existing between, surrounding our yard in the back, the existing house.
It will be fenced, to answer your question, it will be fencing kind of around our current house and it will divide the new house.
Okay, and along the driveway, so...
Yes, like from the...
Yeah, because I think you'd want to shield...
Yes.
Lot, the house on lot one from the driveway, just...
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, to make sure it's kind of blocked off.
Yeah, yeah, I think, you know, you want some sort of privacy to that.
Yes.
All right, so, yeah, I think if we just say no, no further subdivision of lot two, leave it, leave it at that, I could always, if somehow there came some way to access that rear property, you'd have to come back, come back and, you know, get that changed or whatever, but I think for now, I don't see how it could happen.
Yeah, my only concern is, you know, that there's endless possibilities of what could be done with that land, you know? This owner could proposition to purchase a piece of that land and divide it that way. I just think that's, I think that's too restrictive of a condition for the zoning bylaws already restricting further subdivision of the lot without having to come before the board.
For the, for the members of the board, what do you think? And it's also, it's also industrially zoned, so they'd have to come here anyway.
I mean, what would your opposition be to that being in the decision?
Well, ultimately, it's up to the homeowners, I just think it's too restrictive of a condition.
In case they want to sell part of their property?
Yeah, I guess, I mean, it's 3.7 acres, so, I mean, property acquisitions happen all the time.
Yeah, I think if I had any inclination that we were gonna sell some of this land, I would vote against this tonight.
Yeah, we have, we have other plans to sell.
So, I mean, I think that's a reasonable condition.
I'm okay, we're okay with that, yeah. Maybe no stop, stirring it up, but we're okay with that condition.
Okay. All right, so no further subdivision, maintain the 50-foot setback from all property lines to the house on lot two, as shown on the site plan, consult with the fire chief as to the appropriate width of the driveway. Anything else? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, just a clarification, because I know the board brought it up. So you're okay with the location of the driveway in the house on the lot, button to the left?
Yes, I mean, I think if the, if your neighbor's house was right next to the proposed driveway and their driveway was on the left side of that, I'd have more of an issue, but the fact that your neighbor's driveway is going to join, which actually, I mean, I don't know if it's gonna be an issue how close the two driveways are together, is that a potential issue?
It could be. I'm wondering if this, you think this 30 feet between the two driveways?
Yes.
I think it's 30 feet, yes.
Okay. And it's, you said there's a stone wall along your...
Stone wall and then there's some trees.
Yeah.
Yeah, as well.
How many feet of trees are there on the other side?
It's hard for me to measure the distance.
I know, it's like from here to the wall, at least, it's...
Yeah, it's, yeah, well, I was thinking bigger than that, because we've got a side yard too, then the stone wall, there's maybe two to three rows of trees, kind of...
Will that stone wall have to come out?
No, it won't. No, it's a mark of the property line between his property and the Baradas.
Does that bother you, is why you bet the driveway a little bit further away?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any other conditions then, what we said? Okay. Then I'm gonna close the hearing and so it's for a, two variances. One is to allow residential use in the limited industrial zone and the other is to allow 40-foot frontage instead of what's required under the bylaw.
Did you say the condition would be that it would remain a single-family home?
Yes, and that, well, the, the house to be built on lot two will be a single-family home.
Yes.
The house on lot one is two...
So you wouldn't be opposed to that becoming a single-family living in-law in the future? I don't see why not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, we still treat that as single-family.
Well, it'd be designated as an accessory apartment.
Yeah, yeah, accessory apartment, yeah. Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't rule that out, but not a two-family.
That's fine.
Okay. All right, can I hear a motion to approve the variances?
Some.
Anything else?
Some, some moved.
Okay.
Two variances and what, four conditions?
Yeah.
You made a same, uh, same family.
Be a single-family lot two, no further subdivision. Consult with the fire chief.
Consult with the fire chief and do you want, is the fence a condition?
I'd...
Well, I mean, they don't want, so...
Yeah. It's in their interest to do it, so leave it to them, I think.
They already have a...
Yeah.
So just...
Just the three conditions. All right, moved by Mr. Blaz, seconded by Mr. Kimball. All in favor? Any further discussion?
We should make, we should, there, there should be a hardship here and certainly the width or, it's a large lot of nearly four acres.
It's more than double the size?
Yeah, it's more than double the size, however, so it could effectively be five house lots if it were shaped differently, so by...
Right, in the shape of a lot.
In the shape of a lot.
Yeah.
I just wanna stipulate that, that there is a reason for it.
Yeah. All right. I forgot to ask if there was any public, anybody from the public here, which just, I don't think there is. Okay. All right. All in favor of the motion then? I vote, it's approved. Okay. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
I mean, you're staying in town?
Yeah.
I'm in school, I'm working program at the library, and so you're up here.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for a good presentation.
Thank you so much.
Do you have a question? Can you move through the walls? Yeah. He's teaching the house when you're here.
You got Carver Street?
Yeah. Hi.
You can all move up. You can take the comfortable seats.
Yeah. You put a building up a few years ago.
You brought this list?
Yeah.
Health is the only letter. All right.
Yeah.
Location of property, 26 Carver Street. Type of struc, type of district, A2. Type of structure, existing, non-conforming, mixed-use. Owner's name, 26 Carver Street Realty Trust. Owner's address, post office box 128 Hanson. When did you acquire this property? When did you acquire this property? March, March ninth, twenty twenty one. Has application been filed with town clerk? Yes. Has any previous appeal been made? Case number thirteen, twenty twenty one, permits for existing use and structure, two forty dash eleven point six, change in nonconforming use was not more detrimental. A special permit and site plan approval for parking was required. Reason for asking relief? Economy change, convert existing office space into studio apartment to assist in financially supporting the property. There's a, uh, cover letter, um, which we can, we can get to when we have the, the presentation. Put these over here. Uh, sitting on the case will be, uh, Mr. Cover, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Kimball, Mr. Blas, myself, John Goldrosen. This time I'll have the reading of the list of abudders.
Thanks, Chairman. The following is an abudder's list, due to requirements of the state zoning act. Parties in interest for the property located at twenty six Carver Street, Whitman, Mass. Jeffrey and Christine Henley, Travis and Jody Cahaly, um, the state of Alice Hornedike, Karab June O'Leary, David Campbell, James Marvel, Teresa Lee Quimby, John Jessica Judge, Geraldine and James Marvel, and finally Dana and Mark Brantum.
Okay, so assuming you're all here on this case, would you raise your right hand and take a note so you can participate in it? Do you solemnly swear that the evidence you should give in this matter should be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Okay, who is, uh, presenting for the applicant?
I am.
Now, move up.
Kevin Perkins, I'm the applicant. So, I have a couple, I'm not sure what was available to the board, I made a few copies. Uh, I have a few letters of support, sorry, I only have three copies.
Yeah, okay.
There's a few letters of support, some pictures of, uh, the structure. Just the way, it's the way it currently sits today.
Okay.
Um, so, so basically, what we're looking to do, this was, um, as you mentioned, previously approved. Um, it's a nonconforming legal structure that, um, it currently has two, two garage spaces and an office space in the middle. Uh, originally, when it was constructed, our intention was to use that office space for, for our electrical construction contracting business. Since then, it's kind of, things have slowed down a little bit, we really don't need an actual office, a lot of, a lot of the work, administrative work is kind of just done remotely from my phone, on my laptop, that I don't really need a place like that. So I was looking to convert that to a studio apartment, not, not a two bedroom, not a three bedroom, just a, a simple studio apartment. And actually, my, my intention right now is to actually move into there myself. I'm in the process of building a new house in Hanson. Um, I just got my building permit the other day. So my intention is to, while building that, move there, but I didn't want to represent it as that, so I wanted to represent it, so in the, in the future, if I were to rent it out, I just didn't want to represent it before that it would just be me living there. Someday, I do.
Well, as soon as your new house is available, you won't pay back anything.
Right, I, I do tend to rent it out, so I want to be upfront with all that. The site plan before you, that we, I believe we are fully compliant on the parking. There's plenty of parking inside the garage, to the side of the garage floor, in front of the garage door base, for the two garage bases, and there's two dedicated spots in front of the office space in the middle of the current office space. Originally, when this was approved, there was, it was shown as just all reprocessed gravel. Um, on that site plan in front of you, we've, we've approved that, and we're going to pave, pave an apron and line straight the two spots for, for the, uh, the studio apartment.
Okay, let me, I just, I, I did pull out a, a copy of the, what happened with the previous hearings, so let me just go over that with the, uh, with the board. Um, whoop, that's not. Who did I put? There we go. So this is back in twenty twenty one, and, uh, at the time, the lot had a mobile home, a repair garage, and heavy equipment, and you proposed this metal building with two bays, which would be more conform, so you, you eliminated what was on the property previously, right?
Correct.
Right?
Yep, it was a razor rebuild, we, we took down the existing structure and built a new structure. And one thing I would like to just point out, so originally, it was actually approved as a steel building, a metal building. What we did when it came time for construction, when we actually got the permit, was we built this out of wood, wood framed it, vinyl siding on it, architectural asphalt shingles, um, vinyl windows, shutters on the front window, just to make it blend in with the neighborhood where it's primarily residential around the property.
Right, and, um, the other, the only, well, the other port of health at the time, it wasn't connected to sewer, so you had to connect it, uh, to sewer. So what we were faced with was a change to a nonconform, nonconforming use from the previous, um, use of the property, and we felt it was, uh, so all that was needed at the time was, excuse me, site plan approval and the determination that the new use would not be more detrimental than the previous use. And we didn't really, we didn't have any conditions, uh, beyond that.
Mr. Chairman, were no conditions about the, the stone walls and stuff?
No, the, the only condition was connecting to the sewer. Hours of dumpster removal was seven AM to seven PM, um, but everything else just related to, uh, connecting to the sewer, dismantling an onsite septic system and so forth. So, yeah. I'm just, I'm just going to check the minutes too. Yeah, we, we had some discussion about whether, in fact, the nonconforming use had been abandoned or not, and we concluded that property had remained in use, that we were entitled to change from nonconforming use. And so we felt it was, it was better than what it had been there before. Yep, that's, that's all that there was to it. Do you rent, do you rent, uh, before I go to question some members of the board and letters from town boards, do you rent out the garages?
So currently, the garage space to the right is completely empty. The office space in the middle is empty, and I'm using the bay on the left. I was kind of waiting, this was something I was considering over the last few months, and then I filed the application, I was kind of waiting to, to see where things went just before I made a decision or, or agreed to a lease with someone on the, on the bay on the right.
Mm-hmm. Alright, let me, let me read letters from, uh, town boards, uh, from the Board of Health, the Whitman Board of Health grants conditional approval to the petition of twenty six Carver Street Realty Trust for a special permit from section two forty dash eleven point six and site plan approval from section two forty dash seven point two to convert the existing office space in new metal building into a studio apartment for the property located at twenty six Carver Street. The DPW master file indicates the property is connected to town water and sewer be, uh, Board of Health approval is conditioned on the current structure meeting building and zoning requirements for residential occupancy. Sincerely, Daniel Kelly from Whitman Fire Rescue and Emergency Services. At this time, Whitman Fire Rescue and Emergency Services has no objection to this proposal, provided all applicable fire and building codes are met. Sincerely, Timothy Calancy, Chief. Does Building Inspector have comments?
At this point in time, no.
Yeah, what about, what are the building code issues here if it's using, using part of this for residential use?
Well, he currently has a mixed use office, um, and storage use. Um, he's got a two hour fire rating in there between the walls. It would not be required to be sprinkled, at this point, it's under seventy five hundred square feet, so he may have to do some modification, minor modifications, but that would be upon building permit application to.
Okay, not, not a big deal though.
I don't believe so.
Okay, alright, um. Okay, for that, I think I'll go to, uh, members of the board, Mr. Cover.
Um, these pictures, are they part of this unit? Are they, so this is already done?
That's complete.
Huh?
That's complete, that's how it's sitting right today.
So, so pretty much the buildout is done?
It's done, that's, if you look through the, the packets I had handed out, uh, if you look at the floor plans, interior floor plans, basically what we're looking for is a use change. That was permitted as an office and a break room, and there was a whole bathroom in that, in that unit for the office space, so basically we were looking.
And a nice job, too.
Yep.
My concern is, um, ventilation, right, um, eight percent of the floor area has some windows, four percent. I mean, half of that has to be affordable. Egress from the sleeping room, Rob, do you consider that all one room? Have you seen the floor plan?
I, I did, I saw, like I said, there is no bedroom at this part, that's something he's going to have to address.
Well, no way to put a window in.
Well, if he puts the bedroom up against the back door, he can have an egress out to the door.
Is there a back door?
To the exterior, no, this is.
There's only one means of egress.
There's a door frame in, into, um, that can have a two hour doorway going out to the left garage bay.
So you're going to have to egress to the exterior. But like I said, that's a modification.
Closet at the back of the unit?
There's a bathroom, there's a.
Yeah, I, I mean, egress from the sleeping room, if you put the sleeping room up front. Do you see how it gets petitioned out for the, for the refrigerator, the kitchen wall?
Yeah, I think he walks into the kitchen.
So there's like a four foot passageway there that you can walk through, and he's calling the very middle of this whole space as the bedroom. And there's no way to get out of that bedroom unless you come forward. And because there's no door there, is it still need to qualify as?
Well, he's going to have to meet the building code one way or another. So if it's, if it's redesigning a plan, he's going to have to redesign the plan. I don't have the plan sitting in front.
Yeah, he needs, he needs two means of egress, and he needs to have enough windows in there to meet the requirements. I don't know if you have, is there, is there no window on the bathroom?
No, that's not an exterior.
What's on the, what's on the back wall, Kevin?
The bathrooms to the two garage spaces, garage, each garage space has a bathroom, let behind that, before the exterior wall. That bathroom and that walk-in closet are not on the exterior wall.
So there's no way to get to the back wall?
No.
Unless you take out a bathroom in one of the other spaces.
That's true.
So what, um.
There's no way to cross mental length this thing, there's not enough windows, there's no egress from the sleeping room.
I think he's going to have to. Meet the building code.
Huh?
He's going to have to meet the building code.
Yeah, I, I think the fire chief probably should have required sprinklers, but when we had the situation on Essex Street, when we had car repair with the property above it, I mean, this could be a car repair base, I don't. I mean, you're putting motor vehicles in these bays, right?
No, it's S two storage, as, uh, Building Inspector had said, and there is a fire alarm system throughout that whole building.
If he says, if he has a car repair there, it's going to have to, it's, it's going to be a user that's going to have to come back before he's.
So it's just storage or?
But you do pack a truck in it, potentially.
Not, not right now, I mean, you use it for an electrical and construction business.
I, I wouldn't have a problem with this if he can meet the building code with an apartment, for an apartment, have the apartment there, and he blocks off those doors. Put ballast there, you can still have an overhead door. But, I mean, I don't see how you can have this without a sprinkle system. If you're going to put motor vehicles in.
Yeah, I mean, I, I want to be able to.
And there's a door, uh, there's a door that goes from this apartment to one of the bays?
There, there's an opening frame in it, it's not, it's, it was born over one of those, um, areas.
So this show, the, the plan shows a door at the rear of the residential unit? Is that?
That's what it shows, I'm like.
I, on the site plan, that's, that's not that, um, engineer messed that up, there is no exterior. There's a, there's a rear exterior door on, um, each of the garage spaces.
Okay, yeah, I see it.
There's doors there, there is not, there's not a door there.
Yes, and keep doing, and this photograph here, this is what would be the bedroom area, and this is the bathroom, and this is just a closet?
Correct, and, and behind that is a bathroom for each of these that actually comes in through the side. They're not connected, but they, they, they utilize that area in the footprint of the building.
Okay. Alright.
I'll ask that, John.
Okay. Mr. Andrews?
No, I don't, I don't have any specific questions. I don't, I don't see how you can turn this into living spaces, I'm waiting to. So you've got to, you've got to have windows and doors, but I don't really have anything new added to it.
Had you considered just converting that into another industrial space, or, you know, another storage space or whatever, or residential?
No, it wasn't really something that I considered, or really something I would need. This was more something that the super needs.
Mr. Kimball?
I just have the concern about, uh, the previous Bob speaking about, uh, the building code, if it's applicable. I would suggest that maybe we ask for continuance and have a, make sure that everything can be the building code. Because I'm not sure there's enough, uh, exterior wall space to meet the, the ventilation and the, uh, the windows, et cetera. It's always.
Mr. Blas?
Yeah, I, I, I echo sentiment, I don't feel comfortable just handing this off to the building commissioner. If it, if it's going to pass, um, pass this board, it should be ready to go. There shouldn't be something on the plan that we say, okay, now that just doesn't work. Um, you know, we'll give you the variance of, I guess it would be, is it a variance, or it's a use?
So it's, um, what's being sought, it's, uh, eleven point six is a change to a nonconforming use, but, because this is all still, what is, what is this zone does?
Eighteen tent.
So it's zone residential, so it's been used for a nonresidential purpose.
It's not, I don't have a problem with all of the apartment, it's got to do with the fact that it's in, it's now a mixed use building that protection's concerned.
Right, right.
And egress from the sleeping room.
Yeah, anyway, it's a.
No means of egress.
Yeah, eleven point six is a resident, is, um, a special permit to allow any nonconforming use to be changed to any other use, provided the board shall rule that such use is not more detrimental or injurious to the neighborhood. If any nonconforming use is changed to a conforming use, well, it shall not thereafter be put back into a nonconforming use, but, um, I mean, this is, yeah, it's zone residential, but this isn't going to meet dimensional requirements for, of the residential, but it's still going to be nonconforming.
Which is where footage?
Didn't meet it before, John.
No, no, right, so it's.
This is where footage of the two rooms?
Right around sixty, five or so.
Five hundred and seventy?
Let's see, it's sixty, oh no, that's sixty for the whole. Because this looks like it's not, it's not, um, a third of the building, it's something less than a third.
It's, uh, like fifteen by thirty-five, somewhere in.
Yeah, it's, it looks like the building is forty feet long.
Sixty by forty overall.
Right, but it's only fifteen or so, not twenty.
So fifteen.
So it's six hundred.
Is it six hundred, so is it six hundred, we need a minimum.
Six hundred square feet.
For a accessory, or for a living unit?
Under, under the building code or the zoning? The zoning, I believe, is for, for an accessory.
Yeah, I don't think, uh.
He's going to have to show a minimum of seventy square feet for that area.
I thought we had, I thought that was in the building code, or what it was in our zoning that we had.
I might have had something in your previous, um.
In the previous.
The previous accessory apartments, but I don't see it in the new one. And I think you're right, I think it was around six.
Six sixty?
Yeah, something like that.
So that would need to meet that. Yeah, I would. Let me continue.
Yeah, I, I mean, I have just concerns about the compat, compatibility of the uses. Say, somebody's living in this residential unit. Excuse me, Wayne, and, you know, on each side, could be trucks rolling in at four in the morning, um, you know, it's no control-
He may not always own it.
Excuse me?
He may not always own the property.
Right, right, we, if we give a permit for this, it, the permit runs with the property, so what you're gonna do, the fact that you're gonna, you know, control one of those garages, that, you know, may not be the case in the future, and a future owner may not be so particular about how the garage units are being used, and so beyond the building code issues, I just, I have some concern about the compatibility of this, and I, you know, I can understand you wanna make, you know, use, use of vacant space, and granted, it may not work as, as office space for you, or for, even for somebody else, but I would just think you should be looking to it, some way to, you know, just increase the size of one of those other two units, and maybe, you know, that makes it more worthwhile to somebody renting it for, from you for commercial, for, you know, storage and tradesman kind of things, which I think is probably what we all, we anticipated with this. So, so I have some concern. Let's go out to the public for questions and comments, anybody wish to speak on this? June, June?
I just have one question, and that's you have your property on the back seven acres, and Standish, Bradford, and Carver, all back up onto that. I have been told that the other two streets that are developed, the drainage goes out onto the back seven acres. I'd like some assurance somehow that there will be no draining on any water of any kind from the street or from the house onto the back seven acres.
Okay. So what's being proposed here is not really changing the existing structure that's there at all, other than to change the interior use of it?
There'll be somebody living in it.
There'll be somebody living, but they won't, but, oh, you mean, well, but they're gonna be sewed, if you're, if you're concerned about-
I'm concerned about any water draining onto the-
Right.
That's right, because it's not draining now.
Right.
And there has been on the others, and I've been told by people that I mentioned to that there's nothing I can do about it.
Yeah. But as far as, so as far as this property goes, but you're not, you're not changing the interior, and not changing the exterior in any way, like what, what's the, did you say it was paved, or?
No, there's no pavement, then on the plan, it shows paving, like a paved apron in front of all the parking.
Of the parking, but otherwise, so there really, there really isn't any change being made to this particular property that would affect drainage, I guess. Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Yeah, go ahead, Kevin.
Members, Jim, so it seems that the general consensus, consensus of the board is concerns of compliance over the building code, not necessarily the use, and, you know, having a studio apartment there. There's no concerns like a parking, or traffic, anything like that, it's more concerns of compliance with building code.
Safety.
I, I have-
Yeah, which we've all understood.
I wanna see some windows, I wanna see two exits.
Yeah, I, I have a concern with the compatibility of having a residential unit there with the two on each side, I, I think, to be fair to, to Kevin and people have that concern. Rather than send them away, do, have them do a lot of work.
That's, that's right there.
He, he's showing one of the exits going to the left side of next door. What happens if the, that's all closed up and there's nobody there, you don't have another exit?
Right, right, but-
It's not a problem.
Uh, we definitely need him to look further into the code issues and so forth, but in terms of the use itself, what do people think about that?
If, if he were, if this building wasn't built yet, and applicant would have come to, to us, or to the board here, asking for a multi-use with two garages, garage bays on each side, or three units, two garages, and residential in the middle, I'd say, no way. Pick your, you pick, you pick, do you want it to be residential, or do you want it to be commercial? I would, if this was a proposed unit, I would say, no way, mixed unit, uh, mixed use. But the fact is, it's already built and exists. I don't like the idea of having a residential unit there. I just don't feel it's compatible. That being said, I'm trying to be, I'm trying to be open-minded and understanding. But I'm conflicted very much, because I don't feel what's up with all of them.
There's no way that we can tell what in ten years is gonna be stored in either one of these bays. Even if I had suggested put walls in front of the door, so you can walk into, an overhead, through an overhead door, but you can't get a vehicle in there, even that, it's, if he's running it out, it's beyond your control what people put in there, do you-
I, I wouldn't wanna agree to that, even if it was a condition anyway, I'd prefer not to do it, because not having those as garage spaces is worse than not having an apartment, it's just, it would basically ruin the property plan. Yeah, I mean, all I can say is that, like I mentioned, I have a monitored fire alarm system there, I have a two-hour fire rating for that interior space that we show as the studio apartment, that is a two-hour fire rating. Has its own separate electric light reader, it doesn't have any fossil fuels, it has a heat pump system for heat, you see?
There's a second means of egress, there's not enough windows.
No, but if that, if that could possibly somehow be reworked with the floor plan through a, through a building permit, I mean, would that satisfy the-
I mean, I'm willing to look at it again if he comes back with a floor plan that meets the building code. But I think the sentiment is that we don't know what's gonna be stored in the garage bays, so we can't guarantee anybody's gonna be safe. Mr. Jim?
Yes.
Can I make a call?
Yes, please.
And, and I'm not trying to sway the board in, in any way, I mean, the use and zoning completely up to the board. But for building code purposes, I just want you to be aware, yes, if there's, start doing car repairs in there, and it's a car repair business mechanic shop, yes, it would probably need to be sprinkled. But this is no different than parking a car in your dr- in your garage in your home, as long as you have the proper fire rating wall.
Okay.
And I agree, the building code needs to be met. If he doesn't have the proper egress, if he doesn't have the emergency egress window out of the bedroom, yes, I agree, the building code needs to be met. But, you know, I just want, where, where does this board wanna hang its hat? Is it, is it the use? A dwelling is allowed in AA too, so what's really weird here, or what's not allowed, is the commercial one, which you already have. So I just wanna make sure the board is looking at it for the use and zoning, and not specifically for the building code that falls under my jurisdiction.
Is there different, um, there's different, correct me wrong, there's different, um, building requirements if it's a residential garage versus if it's a commercial garage, correct?
Correct, depending on the use that goes on inside. And then that would betray whether it's a one-hour rated wall, two-hour rated wall, things along those lines. Fire stopping, you know, penetrations, doors, things along those lines. I do agree that I would not give Kevin a building permit if his second means of egress was through one of the garage units. And the bedroom has to have an emergency egress opening, which is at least a window. But that doesn't mean you can't have a door out of the bedroom.
Yeah, no, the bedroom could be in the front. You can see in the plan, Rob, I don't know if you've got a copy of the floor plan that's presented, but there isn't a door between the kitchen and what's proposed to be the bedroom area. But, I mean, it's a pretty long distance to get to that door up front.
I think if this board's uncomfortable with the plans that are presented, and they wanna see something more along the lines of what you're talking about, that's a reasonable request.
This board asks all the time, is there two means of egress? Is there two means of egress? It almost gets monotonous, but that's part of the question that this board asks all the time. And it's just part of the building code as well, so we're kinda looking at it for. We don't wanna make a decision that's gonna get somebody hurt.
Absolutely, that's it, it, you know, worst-case scenario, um, there's a fire and somebody, somebody is asphyxiated or whatever, um, and, you know, what that, what in heaven's name is a residential unit doing there?
In, in the middle of that building is the most dangerous space. The, on one end, it wouldn't be so bad, because you could have all these windows, there's more opportunity to get out, but-
Again, that's where the alarm systems come in, that's your first, that's your first warning. The sprinkler is a, a man for building protection, the alarm system's the key.
So I-
Early warning.
So I guess the question, Mr. Chairman, is if, if the applicant is able to modify the plans for the residential unit and meet the building codes, what's the, how does the board-
Yeah, that's because, again, I don't want, I don't want
Yeah.
Kevin to have to go do a lot of work, come back to the board, and have us say, no, we just don't like the mixed uses. Yeah.
Kevin, so, Mr. Curran, on the plan that you have on the floor plan, if the sleeping area were to be in the front, where it would have a double, double-hung window, and, and egress door, a three-door door?
The door itself would fall, you still need another door for second means of egress?
And so if there was a door on the rear of that, if we were able to connect that to the exterior, and put, say, a six-layer or nine-layer door in there?
Is the door up on a three-foot door?
Yes.
So long as you have a two-foot eight door in the back, you'd be okay?
And potentially, you could have a fire-rated hallway going through the garage.
Yeah, I, I would say get rid of that door. The door goes into the backyard?
No, it would just, it would access right out the back, but what my question was, was to put a six or a nine-like door, which would also add natural light into that.
Yeah, if you put a storm door, I, I think that Rob would agree that that would add to the light area and ventilation.
Does it add enough?
Well, it has to be eight percent. Mechanical ventilation can be, there's an exception in there, but you don't wanna have to do that. You wanna maybe have light lighting up in the daytime anyway.
And you can make up with, with light, you can, do you?
How about, you know, something, um, a skylight or something, is that possible?
That, there's no-
Is it a flat roof?
Above that, that's an eight-foot ceiling in that, there's sixteen feet of ceiling height near the space. And there's a, there's a mess in the middle of that, basically.
So is that accessible to the other garages, or?
No, only through the front. But I, I, I think I can make a hallway to that back wall. I'd have to relocate a water heater and a couple other things, but I think I, I mean, as far as building it, putting it on paper, building it, I mean, I can do it, I can get you another door in the back at any-
I, I would need to see another plan. And I'm not opposed to looking at another plan, so I think you should give it a shot.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you'd have to get rid of the bathroom for the, at least one of the adjacent garages, right? Because right now, the two bathrooms-
I'd have to rework some things, I don't think I necessarily have to get rid of anything. Because in between the two bathrooms on that back wall, there's actually a, um, a closet with a water heater in it.
Okay, I see.
And that's
So you could-
Finished at about, I think, thirty-two inches to the outside of the plates, and probably, I might be able to make something work there.
Right. Well, I, I, see, I, I have a problem with the use. Incompatibility of the uses, and as, I think, I think what Mr. Curran said, if, if it was like two things, and the residential was one side of the building, and the storage area was another side of the building, it'd be a little less of a problem, but having it stuck between two uses, not knowing who might be in there, and just, you know, all hours of the day or night, and now, now somebody complains to the building inspector five years down the road, and, um-
I'd have to relocate.
Yeah, even if it doesn't violate anything, it just creates, you know, part of zoning is to avoid incompatible uses. Again, as, as Mr. Glass said, if you were starting from scratch today, and you wanted to put a duplex in there, fine, you know, I think we probably would have approved it, considering what was there before. And when you came and you wanted to replace what were, you know, there were cars and trucks there and whatnot, and you cleaned it up, and put a nice building in, and had it as available commercial space, that, that's fine. I'd, I'd, you know, I'd rather see the two commercial spaces expanded, or a third commercial space in there. I just have a problem just sticking a residential unit in there just because there's an office, and it's kinda finished, and it would kind of work. I just have a problem with that, and-
It's usually a waste of time to get them-
Well, that's, uh, if it's, if the four of you disagree with me, then fine, let them go ahead and figure this out, but if there're gonna be other people who feel as I do, then-
John, I agree with you.
Yeah, so, so you wouldn't get the four votes you need, basically, to change it to residential, and that's, that's not fair to you to, to send you off, so, um, my, my suggestion is to let you withdraw without prejudice, which means you can come back with some other plan without waiting two years, and going through, jumping through hoops and all.
Are there any possible recommendations from the board of what may be another suited use for that middle space, where it's not really needed for me as a particular office space?
A commercial office? Is not. Now, you know, maybe, if he gets lucky, you find somebody that wanna like it.
I mean, if you, can you, you know, put another bay door in there, and make it a third storage, commercial space, that's, that seems to me the best solution here. Or, or, you know, be in a position where you could offer to a tenant to increase the size of one of the two other units.
Yep.
I think that's- Yeah, even without putting a, a new door in, if you just expanded one of the two units to encompass what's now the office space, and make that part of the commercial-
Part of the other units.
Yeah. Might not get you as much money as a residential unit would, but I think it obviously avoids all the construction problems we're talking about, and-
Yeah, it wasn't necessarily a concern of mine, you know, in terms of where to do this more. I was looking at it as a place to be able to live temporarily while holding your house, and then following that, I figured at that point, you know, deal with it.
Well, well, nice of you to apply for it, instead of just moving into an office space, which a lot of, so many people would have done, right, Rob?
I, I heard that story a lot of times, people saying, why, why are you going to ask for permission to do that? Came on me for trying to do things in a approach to the front, like-
Right. And whatever you're doing, I mean, we-
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess I'd like to request a withdrawal of purchase.
Okay.
The application for this is happening.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Andrews, second by Mr. Glass, all in favor? Okay. All right, good luck with it, Kevin. All right, thank you, coming guys. He's, uh, it's Richard who scheduled, you know, and I didn't realize, it's the first night of Passover. I just want to- Maybe he's outside, he was, he talked to me a couple weeks ago, so. Richard, you know, I scheduled this, I didn't think that this is the first night of Passover, which doesn't matter to me, but-
I'm here, past my bedtime, in the middle of a Seder, so I can get this approved. I done everything you've asked for, so.
Do I have anything else?
Yeah, it shows, um-
Yeah, this is great.
Yeah.
That's impressive.
So I sent Kathy, I gotta get out of there tonight, like this hour?
Sorry, I didn't-
This is the updated one?
You know, I didn't look at that one, we scheduled it.
Sadness. I'm very, I'm very glad to see. Well, I've been a little bit of a rock, but I'll save. Son of a. This is all right. Favorite, like. You want to pass it on. Strike you. Yeah, so pay. Say one hundred thousand, it's paid. Strike. Yeah, yeah. That's all I want. They have absolutely no sense. So, so pay. Say one hundred thousand, it's paid. Strike. Yeah, yeah. That's all I want. They have absolutely no sense. So, so pay. Say one hundred thousand, it's paid. Strike. Yeah, yeah. That's all I want. They have absolutely no sense. So, so pay. Say one hundred thousand, it's paid. Strike. Yeah, yeah. That's all I want. They have absolutely no sense. So, so pay. Say one hundred thousand, it's paid. Strike. Yeah, yeah. Say it on. Say it on. Look at that line.
So, this basically is. How many parts do I need?
Yeah. Oh, wow. Oh, there it is. Six.
Oh, six.
No, four.
Six.
Sorry. Nice. So, or. I said, there'll be no students. No, there will be right. In the apartment, so it shows from the light. Yeah, sorry, I didn't want it. I'm a little patient. No, we have this one. And this is on the one. I just, funny guys, that's all. Well, well, this is, they don't need one, it's pages. And this, this need 14. Oh, it's 14? Okay, and this is 14, correct. So how is the church beneath it? Church's not going to. Oh, okay, like I said. No, no, no. I pointed where it is.
Oh, because behind the.
Actually, it's next to the building today.
Well, somebody knocked on the porch last week, so. It was, when I walked by the other day, it looks like a trap.
Wait, when I caught, yeah. No. No, it's, it's, it's. I think that more than I know, I think you're going to do it, I'm quite sure. I'm just not sure. I sent me a book for $600, I'm quite clear. No, yes, it was actually there. Okay. I own cowbells. Right. Which is, this is.
Okay.
It's right here. It's right here.
Sorry about that, only just formally. This is the continuation of the case in number, case number three, 531, 535 Washington Street. So, last, last time we had just questions about, we were suggesting paving the, the parking lot, or prior we paved in the parking lot, and then there was questions about the previous decision for the Baptist church as to what the parking situation been there.
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I've done is based on what you've suggested, I had the plan changed to show that that lot is now not paved yet, but is going to be paved. It shows the light that you had asked for. It shows what the building inspector had asked for with the striping of this, but the whole lot is going to be striped after it's paved anyway. I don't know if we pointed out, I'm going to close up the entrance.
Okay.
Because it's wide open right now, and after looking at it several times, I, you know, this was on the plan, I think, but it looks much better on the plan. Put some trees in and some flowers. So that was what you would ask for, so I changed the plan to reflect that. And you and I both have looked at that decision from the church, but it's irrelevant because they're no longer going to use that lot. I talked to my attorney, Sean Riley. Sean is going to prepare a lease allowing 531 Washington Street to use this lot. There's 14 spaces, eight and six. Okay, so I'm showing the 14. Under the Moonlight District, it's, it's an allowable use, one space, so I have enough spaces for that. And with respect to the church, I'm going to prepare the lot behind cowbells. Okay, if you go up Church Street, if you're heading, if you're on South Ave and you're taking a left onto Church Street, you get cowbells, it's the first building, and then there's a big lot. I had the lot cleared last year, but over the years, brush, trees, some pretty good sized trees have grown, and I'm going to have it stumped. There's actually an excavator there right now. They put the excavator there Sunday. I think he's waiting for DigSafe before he does any digging. That lot will become, there's only two units in that building that require parking, 200 room units, and that lot will show over 20 spaces. When it's done, I mean, I'm not hungry to do this, and frankly, I probably wouldn't start until late fall. I have another project I'm finishing, but I just want to get it done. So, but in the near future, that lot will be prepared, and it's going to be a lease to the, to the church investment investments for that parking lot.
Yeah, so, and so to fill the void in, I looked up the old decision on the church, and Mr. Blas' memory was correct. We, we had discussed this as potential space for the church, but also there were other properties that were discussed. There was property on Legion Parkway and several others. So the, we didn't, we didn't specify on the decision which parking lot was going to be used for the church, but what we said was, here are the conditions, that the lease agreement for the tenants of the church includes a provision that they accept assigned parking and not use a public parking lot. 15 parking spaces, again, for the church, are to be provided through a lease agreement with landowners with a copy of the lease to be provided to the building inspector. A provision within the leases that neither party can end the lease without notification to the building inspector. Lost spaces must be replaced as required by the zoning by law. The applicant is encouraged to use Legion, Legion Parkway spaces, but we didn't require it. And record keeping must be maintained by the property owner with tenant's license plate numbers available to the building inspector upon his request. So, so this was a potential parking area for the church, but it was not what we required for the church, so.
I might, John?
Yeah.
So what I'm proposing now actually cleans up any of the other issues that we had.
Yeah.
And it's clear that if something happens to me, whoever buys, the church is going to have to buy the other block. And whoever buys, which for estate planning and stuff, it's actually, it cleans everything up a lot better, and it gives direction to, you know, hopefully I'm around to deal with it for a few years, but it actually makes it cleaner, what everybody knows. And I do want to add one other thing. In the 12 years of the church, you know, everybody's always on the parking, the parking. The parking is not an issue, and I'm not talking about the church. I'm talking about the whole center. I thought it was rich with the one person that was here, that I hear him, has a building that has apartments above it that doesn't own any parking. I just, I just thought that was rich. Not one car or a tenant of the church has ever been towed or taken. And my relationship with the DPW has been, and we don't even do it anymore, and it's posted in the church, if you went in there, you would see it 12 months a year to park behind, I refer to it as a Getchel lot, he has owned it 15 years. This here makes everything much cleaner. Paving behind Getchels, striping it, those people, they'll have a lease with the other block, and then the church will have a lease with the cowbells block.
Okay. All right, so, any further questions, members of the board?
Do we need to, does that need to be executed before we can?
Well, I think we, we can make it a condition of the approval that a copy of the lease or easement, whatever you do, is to be presented to the building inspector. There's no point in them doing it till, you know, till they're going ahead with it.
There was also a question, prior to paving, did there need to be engineering on the drainage?
So the, when I emailed the engineer and then I talked to him, they had already done the topo on the property, so that was, I was able to turn it around quickly. Their engineer looked at it, and based on the burns that we're going to put up, the topo, the direction, it's not an issue.
So where does the water flow?
There's a catch basin that takes all the water away.
Oh, okay, do you know where it is?
Yeah, it's outside the Berry building. It's on Church Street.
On Church Street.
It's on Church Street.
Okay.
On the southeast corner.
Okay.
And that's where all the water flows now.
Okay.
It's just we're taking a non-burbious and replacing those burbious material.
Okay. And it's, and it's the surface, the amount of surface area doesn't require, isn't enough to require you to do anything.
Correct.
Okay.
But it's not, it's no more than a foot across the parking lot. It's pretty, pretty wet.
Yeah, this, this has never been, I mean, if you go by, you know, a heavy rain, it's not even puddle, so.
Okay. Anything?
Um, I don't, well, did you get your engineer to take a look at the windows in the other door?
Oh, yeah, we had a question.
I've had my engineer. So, I mean, obviously, that's going to be building code?
Yeah, no, I have. And Rob wasn't here the last meeting, so.
Knowing Rob, he's certainly not going to issue me a permit if it, if it isn't correct. But my engineer was out, and I did go into those apartments, and what I told you before was correct with the back apartment, bedrooms in the back with the windows, front apartment, which by the way, I've never been in, and you know who lives there, and the apartment's so nice, I saw it on the next side, I told him I was going to raise his rent. His steep to work, the front unit, the bedrooms in the front, the question comes down to the middle bedroom, and the architects were going back to figure it out. So I don't have any answer for you.
I just had, that's something you need to be aware of.
Oh, no, I don't.
Can you just fill me in on what the question of the board was?
The separation of.
He's going to put second floor on Millies. Right now, it's just a single story. He's going to go right up close to the building next door, which I think they're connected, right?
No, and the question, and what they were talking about was if there's a five foot separation, I think you only need five wall.
There's five feet between?
Well, no, I don't know that, but I think that is.
So they're close enough that you're going to have to be, take a look at it.
Typically, it's 10 or 3 feet.
So they're going to spoil the Egress from the sleeping room because he adds a second story?
So I had suggested to the architect, but this is before we got an answer to the question, I can eliminate that middle unit in the Getchel lot.
Well, well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I, I'm not going to be building the building without him saying it's okay.
So again, if we're talking building code, he's going to come before me, and I'm sure Mr. Rosen's willing to work with me with architects and engineers for any chapter 34 reports of use or any of that sort of stuff, chapter 9 for sprinkling, he'll go and work with me for the building code, and if the board feels comfortable with that, he's going to have.
He might, he might have to lose an apartment and.
It doesn't go there.
Yeah.
So you're going to vote. So in the last almost 40 years, that's what I've done.
Nick, Rob, it was one of those situations, just like sort of the last one, when a, when a plan came to us, we recognized something that looked like there'd be a problem, and we wouldn't want to approve something that has a recognizable.
If I can interrupt, even if you approve it, and it's not.
He is not going to.
We're not, we don't want to push, we don't want to.
Like, no.
And unlike.
They look fair.
Yeah.
Yeah, and unlike the.
You obtained him?
Well, you know, you know what they say, is that I own most of Whitman, which means if I am, proportion of what I pay is going to him.
It's an existing bill.
They could phrase it, they, some of them phrase it a little less.
He's still.
He's paying a little bit more money than we do, but we still have to earn it.
Yeah, and I mean, this is, unlike the previous one, this is one where we can approve it, and there's, there's a ready fix. If there is a problem, there's a ready fix for it that you can enforce. The previous one was less clear that there was a fix for it. Okay, so how, how should we phrase the condition on the parking then, that the, the parking shown behind, what is the?
So, John, you, you could just say that he can't issue me a building permit until I give him the leases.
Yeah, the lease.
For both.
Are you going to stay?
But the, the parking serves both 531, 535 Washington Street and also.
We're going to number them.
Whatever the Getchel building is.
527, 529, 551, 535. I'm not going to do an easement. I'm going to lease from one to the other.
Yeah.
Number the spaces, so I will tell unit one, new parking space, whatever it is.
Yeah, so both, both buildings will use, the, the apartments in both buildings, the residential dwelling in both buildings will use the parking space shown on the site plan to the rear, and a lease is to be provided to the building inspector demonstrating the right to, to use the parking space. And the parking space is not to be used for.
Correct.
For the Baptist church.
Yeah, no, I know, that doesn't have to be there. I mean, it's just, the sporting spaces.
That's, okay, so.
Just make sure your language is clear on what you want.
Right, 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 so it, once you use the 14 spaces for those two buildings, you won't have spaces available for anything else?
No, it's, they're going to be designated spaces.
Okay, is that sufficient for everybody? Okay, all right, so, and what did you need for this, just site plan approval?
Simply site plan.
Okay.
This is an allowable use, by the way.
Right, so I guess I'll close the hearing then and entertain a motion for the site plan approval with the condition on the parking that we've, we've outlined. Approval of the revised plan. Okay, moved by Mr. Blas, second.
Second.
By Mr. Curran, any further discussion? All in favor? Okay, 5-0, all right.
Thank you very much, I can go back to my.
I'm sorry about that, Richard.
Don't worry about it. I'm not, I'm not that good of a truth, so.
Yeah, obviously not, though.
I'm not that, we're not that good. You actually have a. That's why it's, it's a procedure. Good night, everybody.
Good night, Richard.
Good night.
Okay, we've got a couple of minutes to prove here.
Just for a cross out?
Yep, that's it.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you.
Take care.
Um, let's see, minutes for case number two, which is 159 Auburn Street. That was the second hearing on the duplex on Auburn Street. And let's see, it was myself, Wayne, Richard, and Bob Kimball, so Bob Curran was not here for that one.
Okay, I made a motion, so I'll move to approve this.
Okay, second, second by Wayne, all in favor? 4-0. Next one is case number three, which was the first hearing on 531 Washington Street. Let's see.
A lot of notes.
Who was, Bob Curran was here for that one. So everybody except Bob Kimball on this one.
Make a motion.
Moved by Mr. Curran, second. Wayne.
You first.
Bob, Bob didn't sit, Kimball didn't sit on this one. Wayne, all in favor?
That's all.
4-0. And number four, which was 715 South Ave, was this one? Oh, that was the duplex. Right, right, the duplex. Again, myself, Wayne, Dick, and Bob Curran.
Make a motion to approve that.
Okay, Wayne, move to approve, they're second.
I'll, 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 second.
Second by Mr. Blas, all in favor? Okay, and 4-0 in favor, and the general minutes, we can all participate on this one.
Move to approve.
Moved by Mr. Kimball, they're second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Curran, all in favor? Okay, and lastly, I didn't put it on the agenda, so we can't really discuss it, but just wanted to bring up the MBTA community zoning. It does, the last word I have is that it is going to be on the town meeting warrant.
So this, so this.
For this, yeah, yeah, that they were planning to go ahead, notwithstanding the, you know, some of the, their feeling was go ahead. Any, any issue with the state would probably be minimal based on the advice of the consultant, so let's go ahead and get it done, not rely on a special town meeting.
Anything that's big, but it's going to be small stuff anymore.
But it's going to, it's got to go to the state, and then it's got to go to the housing, right?
It, it says two, first, it gets approved by the Attorney General, like all zoning bylaws have to be approved by the Attorney.
It also has to go to the housing.
It also has to go to the housing to be, not to be approved as a zoning bylaw, but to be approved as sufficient to meet their requirements, to be in compliance with the state.
But even if they find something small in that, all of it, if it happens to town meeting, all other conditions of.
Yeah.
Warrant, refer, of the, of the, the new zone would go into effect.
Right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, if they found something that the Attorney General didn't have a problem with, but that didn't quite meet the requirements of the MBTA act, we might have to make some further amendment later on, but.
At least the, the, the zoning bylaw could go into effect.
Yes.
And be, they can just apply first requirement.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, again, I think even if the state had some issue, if it was a small thing, they.
What is it, from December 31st?
let's go ahead and get it done, not rely on a special town meeting.
It's going to be small stuff anyway.
But it's going to, it's got to go to the state, and then it's got to go to the housing, right?
It, it says two, first, it gets approved by the Attorney General, like all zoning bylaws have to be approved by the Attorney.
Also has to go to the housing.
It also has to go to the housing to be, not to be approved as a zoning by law, but to be approved as sufficient to meet their requirements, to be in compliance with the state.
Even if they find something small in that, um, all of it, if it passed the town meeting, all other conditions of.
Yeah.
Warrants, we've heard of the, of the, the new zone, we're going to affect.
Right, yeah, 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 if they found something that, uh, the Attorney General didn't have a problem with, but that didn't quite meet the requirements of the MBTA act, we might have to make some further amendment later on, but.
At least the, the, um, the zoning by law can go into effect.
Yes.
Be the December 1st requirement.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, yeah, again, I think even if the state had some issue, if it was a small thing, they.
What is it, by December 31st?
Yeah.
It's going to be done.
So that's, that's a problem with waiting till the fall, we, we wanted all along to try to do it by the May town meeting, but at least I and maybe others were a little concerned that this, the state had set up a, a procedure for sort of pre-approval, submitting a draft bylaw to the state, but they needed 90 days to look at it. So there isn't time to do it before town meeting, so that was.
And 90 days has already turned to 150.
Yes.
Who drafted this file?
Uh, we, there was a consultant, Judy Bonnet, is that her name, who's, you know, worked with. Now, if the state, the state put up money so towns could hire consultants to help them draft the bylaws. And there's, the state did provide a, like a computer model to try to calculate if you had enough lots and square footage and everything, uh, or acreage to meet the state requirements, so that's sort of a, a way of.
The frontage, frontages were, were less.
Yeah, I guess the one decision they made was to reduce the frontage requirement, uh, down to as little as 40 feet, which there were some lots that wouldn't have qualified otherwise, including the 66 Pond Street, so so that change has been made, I don't know what other changes were made. Um, and is, and the bylaws not available other than going to the town clerk's office, is that correct?
Well, they had copies at the, of the character, yeah, so I got a copy.
Can you have it electronically?
No, but it's.
Yeah, could you stand it and send it out?
Can you send it out?
Sure.
Yeah, if you, just send it, just send it to me, I'll send it to everybody in the board.
I'd like to see it.
Yeah, 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 if we had, if I had it on the agenda, and we had time to look at it, I was going to ask the board if they wanted to endorse it or whatever. I mean, I'm prepared to speak in favor if it's on town meeting floor, but I'll just do it on my own then. Okay, so we have meetings scheduled now for, um.
13th of May.
May 13th, how many cases? Two cases, May 13th.
What are the cases?
AT&T.
Yeah, the cellphone.
Yeah.
That should be quick.
You say, um, anywhere we can start getting copies of the application by email?
I think it's Old Mansion, I'm not sure though.
The what?
Old Mansion.
Yeah, um.
It is, 92 Old Mansion.
Yeah, can you get me copies of just the application sheet? Just the sheet, just so we know.
That, that means, that's all I need to even say, usually.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that way you can at least look up at the bylaw.
I know, we are getting tagged with.
Yeah, I have been lately, um, Carol has been having me review the ads, so if I look at, uh, if I don't think the, the listing of the needed relief is correct, I've been changing it. So I've been checking the, you know, against the bylaw, uh, but without seeing the plan, you know, or anything, so, um, yeah, if you can get me copies, I'll, I'll distribute them, and then we also have a meeting now for June 10th?
I haven't done anything with that yet.
Right, but that's, so June, I think it's June 10th, the second Monday, in June, we have one case scheduled for that.
That was five.
You'll be late?
Yeah.
Should we, uh?
No, you're enough. Oh, we need, we need an associate, too.
Yeah, we now have an official vacancy for the associate, um.
I didn't see other names in the, uh, in the guest board.
I, I wasn't, I was there, yes, um. Is June 10th, would you be back on the 17th, because we could do the 17th?
I'm back on the 17th, yeah.
Why don't we make, why don't we make it June 17th then, to be safe?
17th to what?
June.
June, so May 13th, June 17th, which is the 13th, uh, wait a moment, when is Juneteenth, that holiday?
Oh, yeah.
What are we going to do on the June 17th?
We have, we have a case.
I have a case.
A case for June, so I'm trying to set a.
So May 13th, June 17th?
Yeah, but I'm just checking, checking to make sure that's not a holiday.
Holiday.
May 13th. Is that even, is.
Yeah, it's not a real holiday, yeah.
I'm on the 15th of May. And I'll be back on the 21st, I get home at.
Okay, so it's a, that's a.
Five, five, five minutes up to 12 at night. And then I'm going back to Disney World for six days in March.
I just didn't know if it's a Monday holiday or if they celebrate it on the, the date.
The 19th is Juneteenth.
All right, so they don't, they don't make it a Monday holiday.
They school all the town departments. I've done some 19ths.
Yes, we're still on, so, so it's June 19th, it's a holiday, it's not a Monday holiday, okay.
Yeah.
So why don't we make it June 17th for the June meeting, that way Dick will be back?
Yeah.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay, uh, take the motion to adjourn?
You're going to put an add in the paper for a new alternate motion?
Motion by Mr. Curran, well, we'll notify the staff. Is it second?
Second.
By Mr. Kimball, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.